Very well. Please, ladies and gentlemen. To the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, into the soul with liberty and justice for all.
First up, discussion and or approval of our minutes from last meeting.
You guys presented.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next up. Please, yes.
There's also a request to amend your minutes from April twenty nine.
Hmm, also.
Um, April was discovered. Um, on page three at the very bottom, it says that the purchase of the cruisers for the sheriff's department. Um, were four thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars each.
Hmm, actually, I love a deal.
Forty-two thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars each. Um, this was picked up by our attorney who was asked to sign a certificate for the.
That's a good catch.
So if you would go to amend the minutes, we'll get them corrected.
I'll make the motion.
Sir, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Deborah. Onto calendar, any discussion?
Nor do I.
Nor do I. Onto previously signed documents, motion to approve.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next up. We have a department update, restorative justice.
Hey, Mike.
Mike, how are you? Good to see you.
Good.
Happy summer.
Same to you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, it's out of Pittsburgh. Yes. This is okay. Um, yeah, we're the restorative justice program is plugging along. Um, continuing to serve the county and the and our community with our programming. Um, we're working with our community partners, um, like Lake Region Community Services, Horizons, Navigating Recovery. Um, and many others. Um, to do that, we're seeing our referrals move back to pre-COVID levels. Uh, already this year, we've had forty-one adult and juvenile referrals. Last year, for the entire year, we had sixty-one. So we are, we are right on target to, uh, to increase this year to our pre-COVID levels, actually a little bit more. If the trend that we're currently seeing stays in place. We're currently carrying twenty-one juvenile cases, sixteen adult misdemeanor, twenty-six felony. Adult cases, one education only, uh, case, which is a total of sixty-four. Um, it's seven, an increase of seven active cases since the last time I saw you, uh, three months ago. Um, and we're seeing the increases across all levels, juvenile and adult programming. Um, with the summer months, our community service hours have increased, just to give you an example of a couple of things that we're doing. Well, once again, uh, the adoptive spot, um, in the name of Bellnet County. Uh, recovery court, as well as the restorative justice program down at Vet Square. This is our tenth or eleventh year in a row having that spot. Uh, we're there every Friday, uh, trimming, weeding, mulching, uh, keeping that, uh, nice for the vets. Um. It's, it's a weekly process because of, uh, it is an area that is frequented by the homeless. So there's a lot of, uh, damage that gets done on a regular basis that we have to maintain and and keep that looking nice for the city and and for the county. Um, we're also, uh, dedicated our food drive over the summer months to the Guilford Laconia Gut Lunch Program. As well as the, uh, Boys and Girls Club Summer Lunch Program. Uh, there are many, um, many, many students that rely on free breakfast and lunch during the school year that they don't get. Uh, during the summer months, if it weren't for these, uh, programs. So let's, we dedicate to that to, uh, try and help those out, uh, to give to those kids that need that. Um, that wouldn't otherwise have it. Uh, that's just a few examples of what we're doing, uh, throughout. We'll be working at the Laconia City Library again, as we always do, um, over at Gunstock with the Wetlands Walks. Uh, we'll have volunteers over there working, um, throughout the, throughout the county and throughout the summer. So, uh, as far as the budget is concerned, we're at forty percent of our projected, uh, expenditures, uh, which is well below where. I get fifty-four, fifty-five percent, so we're well below, um, the halfway, uh, mark. Uh, as if we continue on the trends as we currently have, I think I'm gonna have, uh, roughly a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar surplus at the end of the year. So we're right on point with the budget with basically a, a zero balance at the end of the year. Uh, other than that, everything is status quo and, uh, we seem to, uh, seem to be running, uh, on par and getting stuff done the way we seem to always do.
Mike, I applaud you for the program for feeding the children in the summer. Where do you get the food?
So we have eleven pickup points, um, that, uh, throughout the county. Um, we have here at this, uh, facility, the nursing home, the SAU building on Dartmouth Street, Community Services Building. Uh, Horizons, City Hall. Uh, Superior Court, Deeds, Laconia District Court, Weskit Law. Um. Cheney. Cheney and O'Neill, uh, Public Defenders. I think that's all. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, City Hall, um, does very well. They have a, uh, they bring in a canned good or an item for donation. They get to wear jeans on Friday. So they, they have a very large bin for us.
Good.
Every week.
That's really nice.
Yeah.
With the increase of cases this year, you're anticipating a, a surplus in your revenues as well?
Um, well, we see it's, there should be, I think I'm, I'm already above what was projected. Um, so for our juvenile cases, we've seen a big increase there because we get two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for every expert screener that we use. So that has been a pretty big increase for us and as far as that goes. Um, on the adult side, I'm seeing more people coming in that are paying the program fee as opposed to what the court is waiving. But the court is still waiving, but I, I will anticipate that we'll be above on revenue. I looked at the revenue line when I did this, um, and I'm, I'm above what was projected, but I didn't record the numbers. I think we'll see a slight increase. I don't think we'll be asking.
Uh, Mike, one education-only case, should we be disappointed at that number?
No, because those go up and down. We'll get a bunch of, uh, alcohol-only in now with prom and graduation, uh, because there'll be some kids. So we'll see that number, um, go up for kids that have to come in for an alcohol-only education course. Uh, so that's, and then also with the school year winding down. Those kids are not, you know, the SROs are not direct referring in, so that number, and those are usually short-lived programs. So they, they come in, they may take a four-hour online class, or they may come in and have a couple of online classes while they're here with us. Um, and they, those turn around very, very quickly, so that number is not surprising.
And the felony caseload is a bit higher than misdemeanor. Does that fluctuate during the year? I know you've made previous reports. Is the, is the felony number usually higher historically?
Yes, yes. Um, I think a lot of that is because, um, when you look at misdemeanor level cases, they have four-hundred-dollar program fee. A lot of times the fine for what they did is cheaper than the program fee, and so it's an economic thing and they just take that. Um, a lot of times at District Court. The misdemeanor stuff that comes in isn't, um, it either doesn't rise to the level that it should be diverted, or it's above what would be, should be diverted. Like DWIs or domestic violence type stuff. Uh, drugs are, are, are usually felony-level offenses, and so that's the majority of what we see are the, the drug cases that get referred over.
Okay. I'm good. Commissioners? Michael, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good summer. Be well, thank you. All right, Commissioners, uh, Sheriff here? Yes, he is. I did see you back there, Sheriff.
Good evening.
Nice to see you.
So I don't have an agenda, so I don't know which, what, what you have on your agenda to go first with.
Uh, we have four grant applications to be discussed.
You want me just to talk about each one?
Please.
Okay. So I have, uh, Highway Safety, uh, just put out their. Process and, uh, it closes on June twenty-first. Uh, this year they did do, uh, where we'd normally be able to apply for highway safety, uh, monies for overtime reimbursement for the, uh, speed grants and the DWI grants. Um. And then there's a second one, that is the grant for, uh, equipment, which is a seventy-five, twenty-five match. And specifically, we'd be putting in for radars for that. So the state has already told us that they would, um, like to give us. Some monies for the highway safety, um, traffic enforcement. Of ninety-four-hundred dollars. So it's an increase from, from over last year, and that's from the successes that we've had this year. Um, again, that's a, a grant that, um, we know that if we apply for, uh, that there's a ninety-nine percent chance that, uh, it'll be awarded and signed off on. The, because they combined the two grants together, even though they're two different, uh, like, application processes, they are submitted together. So if we choose to, um, go with the radar grant as well, uh, I'm proposing that we put in for ten radar units. At twenty-eight-hundred dollars apiece. So the radar are, actually, they're twenty-six, sixty apiece, um, in our match, uh, for that grant. Would be sixty-six-hundred-and-fifty, fifty dollars. So that's how much we'd have to come up with if we were to, uh, to apply for this grant to outfit all ten primary patrol cars with, uh, new radar units. If we chose not to, uh, apply for that grant, uh, I would definitely, uh, say that the highway safety grant is definitely something, the, the enforcement grant is definitely something that, uh, we need to apply for. Now, this is for, uh, their year, fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, which starts in October. So even if we didn't work, it's just like last year's grant when I applied for that highway safety grant. Um, if we chose not to spend any of the monies between October and January first, that's, that's fine, that's. That's whatever we choose to do, and I can build, uh, like, the sixty-six, fifty. I can request that in my upcoming budget as part of, uh, the upcoming grant for the next budget. So I just, I would like to, to not miss the opportunity for this grant. So I'm asking tonight to be able to apply, uh, for this grant as a whole, both for the equipment and for the overtime.
Bill, how much does, would we pay for the traffic enforcement portion of that?
The only thing that we're paying for is, we don't, we don't pay for anything on that. It's probably reimbursable. So that's the, that's the, and it's paid at an overtime rate. So that's, um, they, they factor in, or they set the money, and then we would just say, this is how many hours we can participate.
Right. That does no match, you have.
No, no match, nope.
So there's no ongoing additional cost to the county regarding the track, traffic enforcement grant?
Correct. The traffic enforcement grant is, is, uh, they, they pay us a hundred percent. They pay for everything. So that's the retirement, that's any, any of the, uh, additional financial, uh, processes.
There is an additional charge to the county of sixty-six-hundred regarding the radar.
Sixty-six-fifty for the radars if we were to choose to go with ten.
And do we know, Bill, if there's precedent with the nine other sheriffs, do they have radar units in their cars?
Uh, most of them do, yes.
Most of them do?
Yep. Most of them have been performing with these grants, and they've been buying them, you know, a couple at a time a year and all that stuff. Now, we did purchase, um, so back when I first became sheriff, um, two terms ago. That's when we, uh, I made a purchase of nine radar units from the town of Alton. When they refurbished their new cars, they were buying them with radar units inside of them. So I bought nine radar units then, and, um, and we saved a ton of money. I, I think it was, I think we paid three-thousand dollars for the nine radar units.
And just don't have that.
But those, yes, that's currently what we're using, but they're starting to fail.
They are failing?
They're starting to get to fail, yes. Um, so it's at this point now where we start looking at trying to refurb it. Now, I was trying to build it into the cost of the new cars that we're getting, but at, um, you know, three thousand, almost three thousand dollars apiece. Um, it starts pushing us over, uh, the lease amount that we wanted to spend. So we have a good opportunity with this, you know, the state will pay seventy-five percent, we pay twenty-five percent, so I, I find that to be a win. So basically, for the price of two new radar units, we're getting ten.
How old are the current units?
Uh, well, they, I, I'm believing because they're, uh, the golden eagle ones, so they're, they, they have to be at least ten years old. I mean, I've been the sheriff now almost four years, so they're, and their cars came offline, so they keep their cars traditionally around six years.
What's the lifespan of these units, the newer ones? Five years, ten years?
Ten years is a good, good cycle for these.
And is there any annual maintenance cost?
Yeah, so every year we pay, I think it's fifty dollars per unit to get, um, certified calibration. If they need to be calibrated or whatever, you know, we utilize, uh, two-way, um, communications to do that. We used to send them down to state, but they stopped doing it a couple of years ago, and now we have to go to a vendor. So as long as that vendor is, um, these are custom, so they, as long as they're custom vendors, they're all right.
And you're saying the majority of your peers? In the other nine counties, the majority, probably six out of the remaining nine, is that the number?
Yeah, well, I would say that a majority of them, yeah, so, um, you know, up in, I don't know what they have up in, uh, Coas County. I, I just don't know what they're doing for business up there, but I know Hillsborough, Merrimack, Sullivan County, Stratford County. Uh, Cheshire County, all those other counties are, they have radars in their cars and they're, again, they're, most of them were purchased through this program here. It's just last year was the first year that we've done this grant program, so this year is, you know, we're kind of expanding it now. Another good thing too is that we actually, if you remember the MDT grant, so it's the same, it's the same grant process, and we did the same thing. So we, you agreed to allow me to apply for it last year, we accepted the grant, and then we paid for the actual, um, MDT, basically, like the process this year. And as a matter of fact, they come online on, I think it's the twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth.
Commissioner Hodges?
Uh, Bill, where would the sixty-six, fifty come from?
Um, I would probably ask for any new equipment. So again, I wouldn't build this into my budget this year. It would be built into the budget upcoming, because this is, this is in October. Like, if, if we, if I apply for this, they decide to award it, it would be awarded in October.
Okay.
And then that starts their fiscal year, so I would just wait, I'd just build it into my budget for next year. So we don't have to even pay for this this year is what I'm getting at, but if I don't apply for this, uh, by the twenty-first of this month, we may miss out. Which then could be here next year, the following year, but.
Commissioner Wery?
I'll move to, uh, for an approval to apply for these two. Or Homeland Security.
Nope, this is just a, uh, highway safety, so it's a, you can, highway safety grant. So it's very localized.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
The next one is, uh, the bulletproof vests grant. Uh, again, I had, um, for this year, I'd already. Put into my budget, uh, for four exterior vests, uh, four hundred dollars apiece, so I have sixteen-hundred dollars that's currently in my budget. Uh, for, for these external vests. Um, we found this Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program, which, um, is basically, it's a fifty-fifty match. For bulletproof vests, provided that I develop a policy that requires those who are issued vests are required to wear the vest. And, uh, knowing that, um, and then knowing that, uh, some of my deputies could use these vests. Uh, masking for the, uh, ability to apply for this grant and secure the fifty-fifty match. And, um, it's gonna be, uh, forty, forty-eight, sixty-five for seven vests. So for the primary units that are on the street that would be using these vests, um, that will cover that, and it includes the exterior vest and the, the panels that are, uh, insert for that. We'll end up having to pay twenty-four, thirty-two, fifty with the, with the, uh, the matching amount, which is, um. Which, again, I have the sixteen-hundred in my budget already, and, uh, under new equipment, I'll forego, uh, one of the firearms I was gonna purchase this year. And supplement that, that for that, so it'll come out of my budget this year under new equipment, and, uh. I'm, I'm just gonna go with that as long as I can apply for this grant. This one also has a, uh, June, it's actually a June twenty-fourth, um, submission date. I have to have it, uh, requested submitted by that date. It's all electronic.
Will everybody have a vest then?
Yes, e- everybody that's on, that works full-time, uh, that's, that's working, yes.
How about the court?
Uh, so I have, I have some of the court bailiffs right now, the ones that elected to request a vest, uh, we have been purchasing them, purchasing them vests. Those who choose not to wear a vest, I'm not requiring it if they choose not to.
But they're available if they'd like to wear.
Yes, so I, I'm building all that into my budget, so every year, um, as we, you know, as deputies or bailiffs request, um, the vests, we're purchasing them. Yeah, I'm making that a priority.
Okay, I mean, my only concern with this request is that we have enough vests for everyone who wants one in the department. And you're assuring us that you do. You're not sure that one vest, two vests.
Nope, for those who want a vest, they, this would cover that amount.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Now, uh, last year, um, I had a couple employees that approached me on, uh, their request to start a, a canine unit within a sheriff's office. At that time, I was not, um, prepared to, to even explore the option, but I, I did ask them with, uh, gathering up information and, and, um. Getting whatever they wanted to get for the background as to why we needed and all that, uh, prepared, and they've done so. So now, um, I happened to go to a trade show, uh, the Chiefs Association Trade Show, uh, last two weeks ago. And, uh, while I was there, I got talking with this guy from the Stanton Foundation of the K nine units. And, um, and he made an offer that I felt it was time for me to present this. So the Stanton Foundation is offering, uh, thirty-two thousand dollars for a, uh, it's ultimately a five-year program, but they pay for the three years. Uh, for a K nine unit. They pay for everything between training, um. The dog, the, uh, equipment to include up, updating of a cruiser. And, uh, all the other stuff that's associated with it, so they, they have a certain amount that they pay for, um, veterinarian bills and all that. And, uh, I looked at it and said, I, I think that this is a good deal for us. Now, I took into account that we've had several incidences that have happened over this year, where we've requested K nine units. Most of them have been fugitive-related or, uh, drug-related incidents, where either a K nine was not available. Or it took a substantial amount of time for the K nine to get there. Um, I think that it's time for the county to step up and, and to provide this, uh, K nine unit to the county, to all the units within the, in the county. Now, I'm also a person that believes that, uh, we don't need a car that's set up where all this person does is K nine, and they don't do the statutory duties that are required of a deputy sheriff. So with that, uh, the cage unit that we would be looking at purposing is a split unit, so it's a, uh, half, half the backseat. And the, the rear compartment area is actually for a K nine, and the rest of it, uh, we can still transport people, and it's got an actual, uh, transport area. So the deputy would not, uh, be derelict of their duties that they're required to do statutorily. I also believe that, um, because our deputies predominantly work between eight AM and eight PM, that this is a good supplement to our, uh, units out on the street right now in the county. Because trying to find a dog during the day, uh, has become very difficult. Uh, we also have multiple dogs that are actually, uh, either offline, we're gonna be retiring soon, which also is a, uh, concern. So with those, um, I have, um, Nate Moss, who's one of my deputies here. Uh, he's done a substantial amount of, uh, research on this, and he's been in contact with other K nine units. So I would defer to him if you have questions specific about what or how, or, or how many balls we get and, and things like that, that involve a dog, because he's been involved in mostly.
Well, other than the state police, we know they have dogs. How many dogs are in the county right now? How about the town?
Um, so Nate, do you wanna answer that? You're in a town, they're in the towns right now with a dog, um, Barnstead and Alton.
Barnstead and Alton?
Well, but Guilford.
Guilford, uh, their canine is currently undergoing cancer treatments. Uh, Laconia's dog is preparing to retire within the next year, um, so every time. I'd say the last four times we've tried to contact Laconia, they've just been unavailable.
How about Belmont?
Belmont doesn't have a canine anymore.
Will those dogs be replaced? Nate, the one that perhaps is, is ill and the one that retired, are they planning on?
There hasn't been no talk for Guilford to replace their canine at this time, um, Laconia as well. Uh, on our most recent issue, we had Bristol come out with their canine. Um, and he's retiring in August. I know Bristol has another dog that they have purchased, and they're gonna be putting it through the process to train. But other than Bristol, I know Laconia has no dogs and Guilford has no dogs.
State police.
State police is who we have been contacting when we need a dog, uh, but sometimes they're unavailable or they're like an hour away. And at that point, when, uh, you just get an hour, you know, jumpstart on us, it's pretty hard to remain focused on the track and find them at that point.
Have you had a request, Bill, from the Chiefs to get a dog?
No, so what's happened is I, I went before the Chiefs and let them know that I was considering, um, presenting this opportunity to, to start a K nine unit. And that I would be asking the Chiefs for that type of support, um, if they thought it was a good idea. The ones that speak up are predominantly the, the, um, the towns from the outskirts of our county that are, uh, looking and that utilize our services quite frequently. So, uh, they seem to be in favor for it. I don't really hear anything from the other chiefs that already either have K nines or have had K nines in the recent past. They're just silent on the, on the matter. What I can tell you is that, um, we, did you happen to get this in your packet, uh, of an idea or a, uh, the entire? Uh, process where the Stanton Foundation, where their current K nine participations were?
Uh, see it in the email.
Oh, it was in the email?
Okay, perfect, um, so Hillsborough County, uh, currently has dogs, um. Carroll County and, uh, Cheshire County has dogs. Again, they're starting to take it out of, at a county level, because first off, we have jurisdiction. We don't, we don't have to play the mutual aid game. We, this is our jurisdiction, we can respond to where we need to. Uh, secondly, uh, we tend to, to go, uh, self-deploy to these locations before actually needing to be, uh, asked or told. And, and in our case, we have been finding a need for, uh, a K nine response, and again, it's been, uh, lengthy. We've had, um. Like, uh, actually, we've had four call-outs over the last, uh, two weeks for, uh, K nine units, uh, which resulted in, um. Two actual captures, uh, of, from the dog, so. That's why I'm asking for it, and, uh, and again, if it was not already, uh, if it was not gonna be covered by the grant, and it was gonna have to be a budgetary process. I'd be talking about this during the actual budget, uh, timeframe, but we have this opportunity, um. I don't wanna make it sound like this is high pressure, because it most certainly is not.
No.
This grant, this grant is open, uh, and we, you know, there's still a lot of work to do. But I can tell you that, uh, starting a K nine unit like this is not something that's just gonna happen overnight. It's gonna take a substantial amount of time for us to do this, so I would anticipate that over the course of the next year, if this, if I was able to apply for this grant. Um, and then it would, it would be accepted at some point. It's still gonna take a matter of time for me to, uh, to put together, uh, the selection process for, for a K nine handler. Not to mention they have to go through an interview process, uh, with the, with the Boston K nine unit, who is, uh, who spearheads, uh, the selection process. And then the outfit of the cruiser and, and, uh, developing the policies, and there's just a few other things that we'd have to get in place in order for this to, to, to go live. So that's why I'm here today is to, to start this process and, uh, you know, hope that you'll allow me to apply for this grant.
So right now, Bill, we know that three of the ten counties participate in the K nine program. Three of your fellow sheriffs out of the ten counties, thirty percent participation, have a dog.
Yes.
Okay. Nate, my concern here is that you told us a few of the towns are phasing out the K nine. And it sounds to me like they're not interested in revisiting the program. If that's the case, I'd like to know why. Was the K nine not effective? Was the juice not worth the squeeze? Was it, uh, was it an economic issue? Was it a lack of efficiency? These are, these I think are important questions. You know, if you have a program and you're allowed to expire, you don't bring it back, that leads me to believe it wasn't a great program. I could be wrong, but that's what I'd like to know.
I believe it's, it's actually, uh, the time that it takes to actually train a person, and then you look at departments in our area that, where they're, they're not finding a staffing. So it's, it's a little more difficult for them to find staffing just to cover their normal shifts, and I'll talk about somebody in a specialty unit.
And what is the deadline for this application?
There is no deadline. That's why I'm saying there's no, no high pressure here. It's just definitely something that I, I would like to move forward at some point, so I'm here before you today, and this is the first conversation we're having.
Commissioner Hodges?
It's a big knock. It's a huge knock. You know that. A huge amount of time for training, certifying. I really need one time to think about it.
Sure.
Similar to Chris Spadino's questions, that, that's similar information that I would like to know. I, it, it causes me a moment to pause to hear. All of the other agencies are, are sunsetting their K nine program, so similarly, why, why are they?
And I'd like to talk to them to see if they, I mean, I'm, I know Guilford's looking at getting another dog. I'd, I'd like to check with these people that are phasing them out. Are they getting new dogs? They already have handlers. Um, I just, we have those questions.
And I'm taking the big brother approach, where I'm saying the county level is the more appropriate place to have a dog. And again, because we cover more, more territory, depending on the way the state operates. And, uh, I think that us, uh, localized community, they utilize a lot more resources to keep that K nine unit going. Where, where we would have, be a lot more protective, because we're already traveling, we're, we're tra, we travel all over the county. So I find this to be a. So I find this to be a, a thing that I believe should be at the county level at this, this given point. And then of course, the state would be the immediate backup in the event that, you know, we need additional canine units.
So I think, Bill, that, uh, the board is, is open to it as a possibility. I know, and I think Commissioner Hodges and Commissioner Warren probably agree, we'd appreciate insight from some of the area chiefs, specifically Chief Canfield, Chief Kelly and Gilford. I, I'd like their opinion as to how, what they thought the program. Do they value it? How is it to maintain? What are their thoughts?
Okay, and, uh, and would it be appropriate for me to have somebody from the Stanton Foundation uh, come in and give a presentation as well? Because I, I have some eager people from, from that foundation that would love to be able to talk about, uh, how the program works and, and the successes that they've had.
I mean, it couldn't hurt, I think the commissioner is concerned of ongoing cost maintenance. Uh, how intensive is the training, ongoing training? If, uh, the primary trainer of the dog decides to retire and move on, who is there to replace him to continue the training and maintenance of the dog? It, it's an animal and it, it needs a lot of care.
Sure, and these are five-year, five-year cycles with animals.
Yeah.
So it's, uh, three years covered by the grant, the other two years are not.
Commissioners, what say you on the Stanton Foundation making presentation? Is that helpful?
I'd, I'd agree it doesn't hurt, I don't know if it's helpful or not, but it doesn't, certainly wouldn't detract.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm familiar, but I'd love to listen again and try with that program.
Okay, sure. We can do that, you can set that up.
Excellent, so I'll, I'll work with the county administrator on, um, a date, a good date that, that you don't have.
And then meanwhile, um, I'll reach out to Chief Canfield and get his thoughts and ideas on his program and what the future holds for his program here in Laconia. I guess this, yeah, I, I guess this Commissioner Hodges will follow the chief.
Excellent.
So, good.
Maybe it could be a win, a win all around if they were, since they're uh, in transition right now, well, maybe they would say, oh, well, let's just have one at county level and we will.
And then this, well, that could, that's a good idea, and the sheriff can share his canine with the area departments that don't have it. Okay, yeah, okay. So that, that will come up in the conversation.
That's the goal. So the goal is to have a dog that's available and, and willing to go and, um, you know, again, I know what it's like having, uh, local towns that have a unit and they're always sending it somewhere else. I mean, it's, you know, if we had Bristol working with sheriff's office at our request in Gilmington. Bristol has no stake in the game being in Gilmington, but Belmont County does.
It may vary well, your proposal.
So.
But we're hoping to create a little more certainty.
Absolutely.
And probability of success for it, so it works for everybody.
So the last thing is, uh, tower contract approval. So I, right, that's the last thing that was on the list. So, um, right now, I sent back, um, Deborah went ahead and, and, and reached out the Primex for me and, uh, came back with, uh, striking out some of the language. And I sent that back to the company, uh, to have them review it. And they said that they could not, so I sent that back to them on Friday. They said that they couldn't have it prepared for today, um. We're not anticipating that there's going to be any issues with the language being struck out, uh, but they couldn't be for sure until the legal team looks at it, approves it, goes through that process. So, uh, I don't want this, uh, tower project to be hung up. I know that, um, we're full steam ahead when it comes to the radio project and this is the last tower site that we need to approve. So I'm, I'm asking that if the, if the language comes back as it was submitted to me by the county administrator and Primax, that, uh, that you authorize that it's able to be signed and we can move forward. If it does not, then, uh, then I'll return back to the board and present whatever we have. So we have no delay between.
So, uh, and approval pending the language being corrected.
Absolutely.
I make the motion, good.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
I have no other business unless you have something for me. And that's always a loaded question.
I don't know.
No.
Not at this time, Karen, thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Commissioners, next up, our facilities manager, Mr. Bossy John, how are you?
Good, good morning. And I have a couple of proposals for your consideration. Um, the first is to replace four doors for the Department of Corrections that are in really rough, rough shape that we tried to replace last year and weren't able to. So this will be the second year that we'd ask for it in our operating budget. So Deborah and I feel very strongly that we need to move forward with this work, um. Did an RFP, threw it up a bid, did the normal route of advertising I normally do. And we received one bid, um, from Bound Construction to replace all four doors, supply and install for twenty-five thousand, one hundred ninety-eight dollars.
How long do these doors, what have they been present there?
Uh, like, um, they have to be decades old.
And they represent a security risk?
Yeah. And then, you know, they're expensive because they're correctional doors, correctional hardware. Um, the frames are actually cemented into the masonry of the building, so it's, that's, hence, hence the price.
I'm assuming that at minimum they're twenty-five year older.
Yeah, once they're installed and we prime them and paint them, um, and keep them maintained, I can't see why they would last indefinitely as long as they're taken care of.
Are these were included in the budget?
They are, um, my appropriation was fifteen thousand dollars.
Yep.
So obviously over by ten thousand, but this is the only project that, um, Deborah and I have decided to move forward with, with everything else being placed on hold or not being done this year.
So the ten thousand, you have, you have available with it?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, we won't be able to do the courthouse part, and that was the plan.
I'll move to accept the recommendation as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome, what's up next?
The second is, um, they have at the April twenty-ninth, we asked your authorization to apply for energy, uh, efficiency. Conservation Block ran through the U S Department of Energy, um, and it got approved, um, to replace the, um, energy management system for the, for the JL and for the CCC. And I put it out the bid and, um, had one bid of seventy-four thousand dollars from Grand Estate Automation and Alliance Mechanical reviewed the project and didn't provide a bid. Um, the second page is the actual letter awarding the county and authorizing the county to move forward pending your authorization of the project. So I would like to move forward with this project, I think it's going to be very, very good for us to control, better control the environment over there and, um, it'll put the, uh, county all entirely on one platform after this project. So that's been a huge, a huge, uh, effort. We've got the courthouse, the nursing home, the sheriff's office, the administration wing. And this is the last piece of that. And then after that, the county will be on one, um, one operating system, which is, which is great.
Uh, any idea why Alliance didn't step up with a, a bid? Okay.
It's fine to me.
Yeah, I can tell. So moved, I'm in motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.
Thank you very much, you're welcome. Any other questions for me while I'm here? I mean, yes.
Thank you, John.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, next up Lori Sharp here is going to have the financial update and we hope it's a good one.
Hey Lori.
Good evening. All right, and I'm not sure what your order is either with your packet, but I think we're going to start with the revenue.
Perfect.
Cash flow. And then maybe, uh, they are, all good, all right, meet you. Right, so looking at your, uh, revenue, the general fund and the nursing home combined revenue has a sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollar surplus. That's seven hundred thousand dollars better than the last report. Um, and that's due to the pro share surplus, um, that we had anticipated, uh, budgeted for the two point two million, we found out we're, we're supposed to be getting the two point nine. Um, so that, um, it made a surplus of, uh, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. That's offset by an additional nursing home revenue deficit of fifteen thousand and that lives within, uh, Medicaid mostly resident resource area. Um, and an additional general fund deficit of twelve thousand. And that twelve thousand dollar general fund deficit, it's made up in a few areas. Um, there's some changes to the admin area, um, and that'll make an additional fifty thousand. Unanticipated, had a budgeted amount of fifty thousand dollars and it was not anticipated that that, um, would have that amount in there for the year. And then the opioid line, that had a budgeted amount of twenty thousand dollars. Um, and that's been taken out of there, that has its own fund, um, at this point. So those two things aren't anticipated to happen. Um, also, it's offset.
Pause for the, what?
I'm sorry.
The opioid funds coming in is in a separate fund?
Going to be in its own fund.
Why the change if we, if we included it in our budget, why the change?
Uh, just, we are going to get a lot more than the twenty thousand dollars, which we didn't know about when this budget was prepared. And while we've been getting little, you know, twenty, thirty thousand every year, we've been able to justify that saying it offsets the MAT expenses in the jail. We have to submit a report explaining what we're doing with money, exactly. And so when we start getting a bigger amount, like two hundred and fifty or so thousand MAT expenses doesn't justify it. So we need to do something bigger. So I asked the department heads to come up with ideas, submit ideas, what they thought we could do with this money. We want to do something last, more substantial with it than just offset general revenue and have it watch the fund balance. So I have three proposals so far and we're waiting to find out exactly how much money we're going to receive. And then at some point, we'll come back here with a proposal for you as to which, ideally all three we could do, but I'm not sure how much money we're going to get.
Okay.
So we just don't want the money to lapse at the end of the year and that's why, thought is putting a separate fund.
Could defer twenty thousand still go here and offset those testing? And so we don't lose and, and have our revenue be a negative, be anticipated?
Um, we could do that and I will just cut into what we can spend. Now there are equipment, ideas that are being proposed that I think this twenty thousand would be more useful, buying something substantial like that than, than the hit on our revenue.
Okay.
That's our recommendation. That we buy some significant equipment with it that we will have.
I, I hear you, however, we anticipated it as revenue this year and, and to not conclude it, I, I, I for one don't think that is the best thing we can do, but.
Yeah, it will, that's, I understand it's going to take away from our revenue. Maybe we can, um, leave it for a minute or another meeting until.
Yeah, I was right, it doesn't need to be decided today.
Okay.
If that was, if, if that first twenty thousand was earmarked to cover specific operating expenditures, I, I would be in favor to leave it that way and change it for next year, but.
Well, it's not spoken for.
The, the, the twenty thousand is spoken for, we spoke, we spoke for when we created the budget. And so now we're saying we want to repurpose that twenty thousand to do something different with it.
Well, we were always going to do something opioid related with it.
Right, and so we anticipated the, the revenue and the expense in this current year operating budget.
Right, the problem.
So now we're asking to reallocate that revenue piece, but we still have the expense piece in the operating budget. You're not going to move that expense out to a different fund.
Right, we'd have to reappropriate the money out of the new fund.
Right, so that's why I would still lean towards reporting and, and counting for as we prepare the budget, but it's not one of three.
So Deborah, what's, what's the detriment as you see it to reappropriate the twenty thousand?
I, I'm not, I really would rather, I didn't bring it with me, but I want to see what those three requests are for equipment. If the, ideally, one of them is less than twenty thousand and would fit, um, we could use it. Although, uh, well, depending on which department, I guess I'm asking that we just hold off on this for another.
I, I, that would be the way to go.
Yeah, would have not created a year.
Yep, good.
All right, and then I can talk about this and get all of our documents and whatever. All right. Okay, and so I think what I was saying then is that, okay, and that was being offset, I increased, um, um, areas, so let's see, finance, the sheriff's department, corrections area has a, a combined thirty-six thousand dollar surplus. So the finance interest, um, earned, I have it stat to a hundred thousand, so that's an additional twenty-five thousand expected, uh, surplus. And court security, that's been increased a bit, um, so that brings an additional five thousand in there. And corrections, we increased that a bit there and so that, that, um, they're better off by about sixty-five hundred dollars in that area. So, uh, what was a, um, a deficit uh, for the bottom line in revenue is now showing as a surplus of sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Question the restored revenues, could you?
Oh, yeah.
Mike reported that he was on track and thought there might be a surplus, you're showing a deficit?
Yeah, I am, and so I have a note that I'll work with him and, and just make sure that we have everything, uh, placed in the, in the right area.
Right, he reported he's only used, expended forty percent of his budget.
Right, but on the, on the revenue side, because I asked him and he said that he was.
The budget side, I think we.
Receive it all plus up.
Yeah, that's, that is, and I did, I noted that to, to get with him and, because I don't show that. Um, the year-to-date revenue for his area is nine hundred and twenty dollars, so. Oh, we'll check in on that also.
Great.
Yeah. Um, on the expense side, now working through each area, the county convention, uh, is unchanged at a, um, uh, just it's projected at the year-end of fifty-nine hundred, exactly what their budget is. The county attorney's area is projecting a thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and five dollar surplus and fifteen thousand of that is additional from our last report and that's due to staffing um, and adjusting those mostly insurance numbers and payroll tax numbers to match the staffing changes. The county administration is unchanged, projecting a five thousand, two dollar deficit. Uh, that's the same as our last report. The information technology area is projecting a one hundred dollar surplus. The finance area, that's also unchanged, still projecting a seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollar deficit. Registry of, uh, yeah, registry of deeds is unchanged, also projecting a surplus there, seven thousand, three hundred and four dollars. County maintenance, um, has a bit of change here and they're protecting a deficit of fifteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. We recently looked at the, this predominantly, uh, looking at the heating fuel line and we're seeing that if we continue the way we've been, we are projecting that line to go over. So that's what's driving most of that. Um, the sheriff's department, uh, we have a surplus projected of fifty-one thousand, three seventy-five. That's fourteen thousand more than what we were projecting, uh, last month. And, um, the sheriff reported that there would be, uh, potential for some surplus on the tower rental line, so I've recorded that. And then we have the part-time dispatcher line reporting a bit of surplus there. The corrections department is projecting a seventy-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollar surplus. That's thirty-three additional thousand additional from last month and fifteen thousand of that is in the dietary service line and then fifteen thousand of that is in overtime wages line. Uh, restorative justice and actually restorative justice, health and human services, outside agencies and courts and debt service, all of those are unchanged, uh, from last report. And I think like, uh, Mike had indicated, I think he might have said a two hundred and thirty-five dollar surplus he's expecting. We've got two hundred and twenty-five, but so we're pretty much on the mark here in, in that. So the general fund total surplus is projected at a hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars. Um, it's better than last report. Um, it's better than last report by four thousand dollars. And then going along, the new, uh, the nursing home debt service is unchanged with a twenty three thousand, twenty two dollar projected surplus. Um, administration is unchanged, nursing homes with a projected hundred and seventeen dollar surplus. Nursing home maintenance. Um, that one is changed, and that was reduced due to um, the transfer listed at the hundred thousand dollars. And then the projection there um, take into consideration. Um, that we're expecting a potential for a ten thousand dollar deficit with the heat. And that's also offset by a twenty five thousand dollar surplus in electricity. Um, rehab services, we're projecting a twenty seven thousand dollar, um, actually twenty seven thousand, forty five dollar surplus. Eighty six hundred of that is new, and that is due to health insurance um, changes in that area. The dietary service is projecting a sixty six dollar surplus. Nursing services, a hundred and seventy seven thousand, two twenty eight surplus, a hundred and thirty three thousand of that is um, new. And that is due to adjustments that were made with part-time wages. The incentive line and predominantly health insurance was a bit on there. Uh, laundry is unchanged, that's a two dollar surplus. Housekeeping is projecting a twenty three thousand, one hundred and seventy three dollar deficit. Um, sixteen thousand of that was added, and that was in the part-time or this time as compared to last, and that's in the part-time wage line. Um, physicians and pharmacies is projecting a thirty two thousand dollar deficit, and at the moment. Um, the med aid is expected to go over, that's an additional thirty two thousand dollars from the last report. And then activities, um, that one is unchanged. Hairdressing is unchanged, and um, that's projecting a deficit of twelve dollars. So the nursing home surplus of two hundred and fifty four thousand, nine fifty two is about six thousand dollars better than last month. And overall, the improved surplus of the bottom line is eleven thousand, nursing home in general, one combined. Um, so the new surplus projected is four hundred thirty thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars. Uh, the next thing you have to look at is the cap flow. At the uh, the cap position at end of month in May, it's six point nine million. Um, ARPA projects are finishing up, that's obviously reducing the amount that we can use from that. Um, and so we're watching um, with the anticipation of potentially requiring another borrow late in the year. But it's, it's probably still a little bit early, uh, so we'll keep an eye on that. And then the last piece you have is the receivable balance in history for the nursing home. The two uh, the two thousand twenty three balance has been reduced by two hundred and forty thousand dollars since the end of the year. Uh, so that is good news. And if you look over, you might notice then that, for instance, February, March and April, the percent collected. It's a hundred and three percent, a hundred and eight percent, a hundred and seven percent. Those are those payments that are coming in, in those months that are hitting from prior amounts of in. For instance, two thousand and twenty three, or even could be this uh, year, but a prior month. That was my last report, and it seems to be the trend, I'll, I'll do the same thing. Does anyone have any questions for me?
I'm good.
Good report, thank you, Lori, thank you, Lori. Next up, Commissioners. Uh, county attorney, request for reclassification, new position.
Yes, this is um. Attorney Cormier would like to reclassify his deputy county attorney position from a grade fourteen to a grade fifteen. That would not impact wages. And then create a new position called first assistant attorney. And promote one of his existing attorneys into that position. He feels that this will help, he's created a new job description, which I've reviewed the job description and the reclassification of the deputy position. I feel, I, I concur with him. It creates an extra level to set one of his senior assistants apart with specific duties. I think uh, that you have the job description here. Specifying his additional duties that he will do that are different from all the other assistant attorneys. County attorney couldn't be here tonight, so keep. Wait for him, that's fine, otherwise you have the letter, you have the job descriptions. And recommendations. It's her. It will increase wages, um, you just heard from client's director that there's a. To stick up an extra fifteen thousand inch in wages and benefits at his department from the change in personnel, and this would spend about. Fifteen hundred of that fifteen thousand. It'll be about three thousand over.
I, me first, I prefer to hear it from the county attorney. I know you've done an excellent job recounting his request, but I, I personally would would prefer some face timing, hearing his request directly and then asking some questions there. I don't know how the Commissioners feel.
I'm fine, right. I'm fine with that.
So why don't we put this on the back burner and we can arrange that and come at perhaps the next meeting, and we can review it then, Commissioners?
Fine.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Deborah. And do we have other business?
I don't. All right.
Nor do I, Deborah. Uh, any comment from the public? I see a few members of the public here. Seeing none, then we may adjourn into a non-public session.
Did I hear that you can make a motion to the non-public session?
So moved. Or, is there a second?
In a second. Uh, in accordance with RSA ninety one dash A, paragraph two A.
Second.
Um, and a roll call of Commissioner Waring?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanos?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Are in non-public session.